Yeah, are we ready?
I'm ready.
Are you in a hurry? Shall we do the minutes first?
It doesn't mean at 8:15, so just on my way from home.
Any corrections to the minutes?
I'm not sure that the budget was prepared solely by cutting budget requests. That doesn't, that sounds a little misleading. Yeah, maybe we could just take that out of there. There was, there was a lot more finagling done than just cutting requests. There were only about three departments that didn't get the full amount that was turned in. It was more of a manipulation of retirement estimates and healthcare estimates. Overinflation from numbers from last year being reduced down for this year. I would say that had a lot more to do with it than, I mean, to just say it was cutting budget requests, that's a little misleading to the reader.
Did you make the correction, Doug?
Tell me what you wanted to get to say.
I would just take out the, I would just take out the, my cutting budget request. So we'll stop at 2:18 proposed budget period. Anything else? Have a motion?
I'd move it through.
Another second?
I'll second.
They're moved in second. Any questions? Not to stand proof, just read. And, Ladonna?
Um, I wanted to talk to you about the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And are you familiar with what that is?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Just a little history about 2013. Before the, prior to that, children receive books through a grant from the Mitchell County Partnership for Children, which includes Jewel County and Lincoln County. And when they lost their grant funding, they cut the Dolly Parton Imagination Library off. And I think at that time, we had 21 kids as all. At, at that time, I came to the commissioners and asked them if we could look at continuing the program if we found donations for that. And they said if there was no tax money or investment from the county, that we could go ahead and look at that. So we partnered with the Friends of the Carnegie Library here in Lincoln, because you have to be a 501(c)(3), which the county is not. And so to get the, Dolly Parton doesn't pay for any of the books or the shipping. You have to have your own postage permit, and the county could not get that. So the Friends of the Carnegie Library got the postage permit. So we've been doing that program for about four years now. We have 87 kids and 34 that have blown off the program because they age out at five. And so about 124 kids. And the Health Department has done a lot of things, mostly just my staff. We've had a cake walk, and we had a raffle, we've asked businesses for donations. And we've been able to stay about two months ahead from the next payment to keep this program afloat. So two years ago, I applied to the Post Rock Community Foundation for some funds, and they gave us $3,000 so we could stay ahead of sort of always being looking for the next dollar so we wouldn't have to cut the program off. And in the last year or so, we've been working with the Dane G. Hanson Foundation correctly. And they have decided to fund the Dolly Parton program in all of their 26 counties for the next five years.
Wow.
Wow, yeah. That's really exciting for us because it's, that means we don't have to go back and continue to ask people for money. So I just wanted to let you guys know that that's what's happening. There will be some media stuff coming out. A lot of the counties don't even have the program, so until they, they get some of the counties set up, they probably won't do a big media push. But we have about 200 kids that are under the age of five that could be on the program. But we haven't really pushed it really heavily because we were always money short. So we're going to continue to try to push getting that, more kids signed up so they can get books. So it's a really neat thing, and I'm so excited that Dane G. Hanson is going to sponsor that for all those kids. So it's a really neat thing. That's all I wanted to let you know. But as far as Health Department time, all we do now is enter, the kids fill out a registration or the parent does, and we just enter it in the computer. That's all we do. It takes a minute per kid. So if we get four new kids, it takes about five minutes of time. We don't, and we do make copies of this. That's about the only, the only real, I guess, impact to the county or our fund or anything like that. We just try to keep the program going. Parents as teachers goes out with community and sees kids. She has these applications in the library, and we give them to the preschoolers when they go to preschool, because they can stay on for, for until they're five. So even if they don't sign up till they're four, they still could get a year. They get one book in the mail every month. It's a neat program. And it's not income based, which is great, because sometimes the kids that are in that middle income need a little help too. So that's, that's really all I wanted to share. I think it's a pretty, it's a pretty neat deal.
It is, it's a really good program. I, I'm wondering, with Parents as Teachers, do they, does the Parents as Teachers group automatically sign you up for that? Is that why?
No, you have to fill out and you have to sign for your own child. If I don't have a signature from you, we can't get.
But I guess I'm saying, so if, if you're enrolled in Parents as Teachers, that's one of the options that they make you aware of. But outside of that, you can also come to the Health Department and get.
Oh, yes. And you can go online and look and see that Lincoln County's account.
So it's a separate function totally, is what you're saying?
Yes, and that's just how we're going to work out. Parents as teachers gets everything. Any kids that come to the Health Department, we take them to the medical clinic. The only difference is we'll have new, new forms that say Dane G. Hanson on the bottom of them, which they approved this, and I sent it back and said, Dane G. Hanson should be really big somewhere, and they're fine without it. Ain't anything on there, so that's the sad part, so.
Yeah, that's really great.
But John's going to do an article in the paper too, once we get some more information on it. I'm excited. We still have about a year's worth of funds. We send funds, we have to pay ahead of time. So all of our funds are already at the Imagination Library, and we have about a year, we're about a year ahead with the last grant from the Post Rock Community Foundation. So, but still, it's great. I'm excited. Well, for 26 counties, that's a lot of kids. And I think literacy is one of Dane G. Hanson's key priorities right now. So, and as I've said before, health literacy has to do with how well you can read when you're young. You know, if you can't read your medication while you're older, because you didn't learn those skills when you're young, then it could cause health issues. So it all ties together. I'm excited.
So are we, are we clear on what we did on the budget about the Flint Hills thing? Flint Hill, you straight talked out of that?
Yes, yes.
And you understood?
I understood that, yeah.
Okay.
So I guess, I guess in future, if there are other grant opportunities, we probably need to discuss how that affects.
Yeah.
Ad Valorem, because if we get more grant opportunities, then that affects that part.
Yes, yes.
I always am.
That's why we, that's why I want to.
Quite how that works, so.
Reasons we, we moved that, was to help us be sure we could keep those grants.
Yeah, so.
So that, that's something we look at each year, I guess, and I assume it's something that we can move back and forth if we have to.
Yeah, that's, yeah. I just, you know, there's another, there's always big grants out there, and as 1422 grant gets more ingrained, there will be other grants available to us. There was a Blue Cross Bushell grant that would have been another $10,000 or $12,000. But if the more, I'm, what I'm understanding is the more money that comes in, it would decrease that ad valorem, which affects the other grants. So we need to be careful of the grants that we take, so it doesn't affect the other grants that are base grants. So I guess I can really think about that way, so. I'll have to do that next. All right, thank you.
Make it complicated, Ladonna.
I know. Thank you for coming in with updates.
You're welcome.
Hey Doug, you're here. Are you going to have anybody with you today? Kelly coming or?
Howard, Wareman, Frank.
Okay. I didn't know whether Kelly.
No, not specifically.
Kelly was coming in.
No, I'll talk about Carrie Jackson or whatever, but no, not specifically.
All right. Okay, if you're ready, I guess we can start a little early with you.
Good.
That gives you a little longer to give us the spiel.
Well, good. We don't mind speeling. Three topics in general. One, which I'll start with, not so exciting. It's really more discussion today. And seeing that pizza that roof off, well, fits right into that. But as you might recall, some of you that have been around since 1994 probably, solid waste, federal mandates passed down, they threw a little money at this, but regional solid waste planning, and to make things more efficient, that's doing more together in a regional mode is what this is. But that's when a lot of the smaller solid waste facilities were shut down. And every year since we helped with that original solid waste plan for the six counties that said we wanted to work together, we have to do an annual update. And every three years now, it is a more involved update, a lot more questions. Well, this, this particular year, and just like last year, as you might recall, it's a simple update of who's on the committee and new things that might be happening. Now, you can look in Lincoln County's paragraph there and see if there's anything exciting to you, or if you want to add some more excitement, but it's just the last couple of years of activity in very general. They only want to know changes, and we don't even have to put as much in there as we do. But the only one that I really thought of, and that Carrie and I talked about briefly, was in regards to the Dane Hanson assistance for more cleanup. Now, I could put more in in regards to Silver Grove, since they're sort of the poster child of community cleanup right now, and you heard about that from Carol and others, Carol in our office and others, just a couple weeks ago. Of course, they're planning on bigger things, and they need to do some more C and D and other disposals. It's really why I come here, to see if you want to put another sentence or two in, or take out something.
The metal recycler now is in Beverly instead of South Lake Center. These businesses can be all.
Oh, okay.
They're all in Beverly.
And also, the demolition cell has been constructed.
Okay.
With the help of the board.
So it was approved and is constructed, and it, it has been actively used, I presume, with all that community cleanup.
Just, just kind of started. We got as much out of the old cell as a possible field, so.
Anything in regards to those last two sentences on Dane Hanson's assistance?
We approved.
Anything exciting there?
Part of it.
Any reactions?
You guys, assume you're aware that there's a private entity trying to get into electronic waste disposal.
There is, they are, they're big time, actually, already.
They came down to talk to us.
Yeah, yeah, we've encouraged that. Now, at the board meeting, I guess it was Geralt that was on the board last year, we invited them in, probably in August last year, to talk about what they were wanting to do. All counties where they're represented, even with a few extras, and PDG was there. And of course, they were plotting in the background, because there's no other electronic waste really going on, and they're doing it for profit, because they're working with folks in Nebraska or Colorado. And they're figuring out how to make it work amazingly, but using that old school in Jewel to separate things out and find the gold, per se, gold and silver, platinum. But yeah, that's, it's a great deal, I think. And they've received, we helped quasi-sponsor them. We sponsored the program for, it's kind of a Wildcat Tank or Cat Tank at Kansas State University for businesses to come in and explain their situation, and then millionaires, not really invest in them, but give them tidbits of advice. There are some investments, but without strings attached, and they were awarded $5,700 as part of that, select advice and equipment, just grant funds. Going great guns so far.
Doesn't seem to be, everyone seemed to be responsible to it, the counties.
So far. Now, in your county, in your case, are they asking for televisions, for example, or big items?
I think.
Anything? Either little calculators?
I think the things that they were, we were putting in, the transfer though.
There were some things that they were going to charge for.
Uh huh. Yeah, there's some hauling, kinds of weight falling into it, so.
Yeah, we were putting in our little trailer, they've taken.
They were kind of still working on logistics and stuff, as far as transporting it, storing out of it.
Right. And they want to be efficient. If they're going to Elsirick, might as well go to Lincoln same day, you know, like me, try to do the same thing. Well, any other thoughts on the report, draft report, Lincoln County paragraph, anything else new? Because those two I've added in and will change, will have to. On the committee here, this is the current committee, and you'll see Carrie is the only one from Lincoln County, but if you want somebody else on from Lincoln County, you can sure add that. The, since 1994, '95, the committee certainly changed a lot. In fact, I think everybody, even the barbell eyes OCCK has been added since that time. And Larry Emerson, I'll cross him off because he's retired now. Hasn't done that yet. We don't have to have all this done until the end of August, early September, so. Our board, the executive board of NCRPC will take action on it in August, once they have all the input from the various counties. August or September.
We under, we got grant for that electronic waste in the beginning, that grant ended twice in time.
Yeah, yeah.
So there won't be any problem.
Yeah, they aren't even renewing those, their PDG, because they don't have what I call effective ways or means. It is more privatized. Osmond County tried it for a handful of years, doesn't seem to work too well. Hazarded household waste disposal, they do have short-term grants available for those if a county, or say, a couple counties want to work together on a Friday, Saturday. There's funds available for special contractors to come in and pick up and do this and do that. And the grant funds pay for most of that. I think it's 85, 90%. It's things like paint or old fuel, pesticides. Now, this, again, it's a draft, it's for discussion only, but this is an example of a resolution for support of what we talked about here, that I would ask for by the end of August, thereabouts. And if you want to take action earlier, that's fine. But this is pretty similar to what's been done in the past. The big change is they definitely want every county, all of the six counties that are working together on this, this plan, that co-opted together to begin with in the North Central Region. They want them to individually have resolutions in addition to the Regional Planning Commission 's executive. So you can chew on that and contemplate it. Put Dawn's middle initial in, that bottom, things like that.
She has a copy of this.
Yep, she has it electronically, but I'll, I'll give her this one as well. Emailed it to her.
It's the same one we've been doing?
Yeah, pretty similar. It's the same counties, obviously, and same purpose.
Same county clerk?
Oh, it was yours.
Only half that time.
Anything else solid waste wise, through your angle? Before we go on to something else? Before you go on to something else? I don't want to make this seem like advertising, but you're a customer as a county. And of course, North Central Regional Planning Commission is all about updates and trying to keep things moving. We get our fingers in lots of different pies, and this one is, is that one. Started about the same time as the solid waste planning, 1995. And it wasn't a federal mandate, it was one that nobody else was doing, so North Central Regional Planning, which started, NC-KCN. You might care about it.
Every kind of AT&amp;T comes out, I wish we hadn't changed.
We can change back. Charter, customer there from the old days, the old dial-up days. Well, in essence, the reason I bring this by is because NC-KCN has just done what I call a major update. Where it comes in wireless is up north at the city water tower. And we provide, just like we have always, free service for the city of Lincoln, or the host at the water tower, Minneapolis, Delphus, Glasgow, places like that, and Concordia. NC-KCN's providing that wireless internet service. Now it's at what I call a blazing speed. It's coming down south from the hub in Beloit through the ham radio tower that's north of Lincoln. It's also, the reason it can be a little stronger here, or a lot stronger in some cases, is because we have a tower over in the northeast area, really it's closer to Corson's Grove, which is southeast of Mitchell County, but it's a high spot over there that we can send it south to Ada, or south Beverly, and southwest this direction. But this Radwin equipment's what the brochure is talking about. It's a Radwin jet. It is extra high speed, the prices come low enough where NC-KCN, our not-for-profit affiliate can afford it, and based on the customer base that we already had here, and those that have asked for the new service. And we're just sort of banking on that, that there'll be 10 new customers that'll help cover the cost for this. But the rate is only $50 a month for the basic, and 70 for the, the next level, and you can see those on the inside, and 90 for the extreme. Usually it's other places that have it. The tough parameters of NC-KCN doing wireless like this is, it is coming that distance, and yeah, it can easily handle getting to the ham radio tower and then being boosted at the same speed that we got here, and then it sort of disperses like water droplets out. And that's not very scientific, but that's the Doug amateur perspective. And you're grabbing those, and you're trying to get all of that. Well, it's still a pretty high rate, and you can just ask some of the existing customers how it's going for them. If our, our backup generator works just fine, then there's no problem with electricity. Of course, simultaneous to this conversation, the power plant project that we're also involved with facilitating, that's taking place to help shore up the electrical system in Lincoln Center, keep the power on. So we hope that helps too. That's sort of the cooperative undertaking. But this is really to let you know that NC-KCN's still investing, North Central Regional Planning Commission runs NC-KCN, is still investing in the system, and we're still taking strides to try to make things positive and helpful and encouraging in that regard.
Is there an equipment cost?
Yeah, yeah, there's different specials that are run, and it's anywhere from $250 to $450, something like that. And that covers the installation, the technicians coming down and installing. At most places, here, you can probably look out that window, but you can see the water tower. Now where it's, it's kind of odd or unique could be is if somebody is right up against a taller structure, or if they have just a whole bank of trees, and it needs to be elevated on an old, like a TV antenna kind of thing, something like that.
What's your customer base right now in Lincoln?
It's only at about 30-ish, 35. Even in the dial-up days, first internet dial-up days of the 90s, it was probably about 40, 45, something like that. Then the systems went mostly, well, we relaxed going to cable, because AT&amp;T charges a lot to support those dial-up systems, high costs. But then the wireless came in in 2001, and Lincoln was the second or pilot kind of thing of that process. And we've gone down some, gone up a little bit here for the last few years. It's not very many, but it's probably two-thirds business system.
Lincoln is not eligible for anything except basic package?
Right now, yep, standard package. Which is still higher than, twice as high as the last wireless that you would have experienced. Anyway, so that's an update on NCKCN, kind of latest activities. And Chris Heinze, I don't know if I'd shared that before, she's a fairly new board member for NCKCN. She's part of this family down here. If there's anything you would like to encourage her to talk about or participate in there? We'll have a board meeting coming up in August. And the last thing was just in general. I would call it updates. I didn't know Alexis as the elected board member even. Kerry from his interim board membership time. Of course, Aljo and Donna participated in the badge tier number two. But if there's been any updates on some of the new things we've been involved with, projects or otherwise. We'll have another staff report in August. And I just thought, if you wanted to ask questions about it or if you wanted me to just share a little bit of this, either way.
Steve, been doing some traveling, different place center, like Melville? For your board meetings?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Melville's coming up this Thursday. And people, board members can co-opt together, right? You've done that with Karen before. Yep, Melville, it'd be a little easier for Highway Patrol chiefs to get there. And we're going to talk Homeland Security because that's a big animal of ours, is Homeland Security. And we're going to go through the fiscal seventeen. And you're saying to yourselves, well, we're two-thirds of the way through seventeen. Well, federal government's not. They award seventeen late in the year. And we're just now getting to that process. We'll be talking about a lot of those things. And this is a storm-ready county. Well, that's what Homeland Security is about. Trying to help counties or regions be storm-ready. And possibilities, we just don't know. And there's a Homeland Security meeting, council meeting tomorrow, which they'll take on some of those activities, getting ready for fiscal seventeens. David, your representative, obviously there. Other things, though, that are newish, the NCK Food Council. Galen Zier Ryan is your representative on that brand-new activity, Food Council. And that's been talked about at a couple of board meetings before it was blessed. And it's one of those that's geared towards what I'd call farmer's market promotions, but local food developments and encouragements. We, as an organization, have been involved with local foods through business finance, grocery store finance, or energy efficiency projects. But now we're getting more involved. Well, we've helped with some community garden kinds of proposals. We're giving extension, Kansas Health Foundation and such. But there's other things that the Food Council can say, advocate for, policy, encourage. And there seems to be a little bit of growing interest. At least some of the growers of local healthy foods are willing to expand. And that's what we can help encourage. And I don't know if any of you are my age or near that, but I remember even in southern Kansas, or south-central Kansas, a lot of places to go pick, pick this and pick that. Well, that left, it seems like in the eighties, nineties, but now it's coming back a little bit for any handles.
Were you guys involved in the project, I believe, with Mankato? Did our girl in Agroponic?
Not, not directly, no. We just know about it. And our council representative up there, that's what's nice to have, twelve council members from the twelve counties. They're paying attention to those and bringing those back to their group. Because hopefully, this council, through local foods promotions or bridging some gaps, we can help find places, help do some marketing for them, or help them with finding places for their goods. And just even farmer's markets. Now, they can look on Kansas Department, and they can find those, but maybe we can help just further that cause. Because if they're doing that well, we've got to grow excess, just like the guys at Scandia are, or folks over here east of Slemir, New Cambria, Solomon. So it's kind of exciting. It's little baby steps. And there are funding vehicles to keep that going and keep it occurring. Another new one, that Sylvan, even though Sylvan is pursuing housing rehab, but we might have means, we're gearing up for nuisance abatement kind of activities. And we're just planning to help a couple of communities at a time. And 2018 is really that emphasis. But the board had blessed that in May. And we're starting with conversations with a couple of communities. Sylvan's been one where there's been some conversation. Melville, that's a little, Melville a little bit. Similar in some respects, but it's more infrastructure-oriented, capital improvement planning, trying to get back into that as an organization. Just like with strategic doing, it's a process of focusing on certain aspects and trying to help be that entity that can be that extra part. Just like when the Regional Planning Commissions were set up in the seventies, they were there to help the smaller places that don't have the extra staff to do some of these functions, community projects and planning. Anyway, without further ado, that's just some updates, some causes. Don't know anything new on lift stations, stuff, or anything. It's a capital improvement that needs to be planned. Anything else?
Thanks Doug for your work. Thanks for coming down and sharing. Appreciate you.
Do you have any thoughts on any of it, but especially the, the least exciting solid waste? You'll let me know. And send your thoughts with Alexis on Thursday.
All right. Thank you.
I'll get out.
Terry, what does that mean for you?
Didn't actually find the signed memo, but this is the one I was looking at here. About what Mark Lemon was asking the other day.
Oh, okay.
Is someone coming in to talk about this?
Mark brought it up.
I remember he said.
Yeah.
I, I know David has talked to me about it several times because apparently there was an incident, apparently, which fire member had a helmet. State Fire Marshal was making pictures from it. And so David said we need to give us help. So we were looking at this policy. So I will have it in a little bit more.
Is this anywhere other than this particular memo? So it's not really a...
This is what I found in the document.
Over the period of time, about the, about that area, places that were getting popular. It didn't happen here, but in other counties, there were pictures of accidents seen. Those didn't, some of them had victims.
Yeah, that disclosed of their identity. So this is a memo that was sent out from the county to elected officials, department heads, county employees, rescue squad employees, fire districts, and volunteer personnel. And basically, it was a memo that said, "Our policy is that we do not wish for anyone to take photos on scene of accidents or while you're responding to some sort of incident." But it, it was brought up to us last week that that may not be... Maybe some changes need to be proposed because sometimes in the case of needing evidence for something, someone may have a picture that applies to the situation. But, but what you're seeing, Dawn, is this isn't necessarily in the handbook or, or in the form of a resolution.
It's not in the form of a resolution. It was in the handbook for the next handbook updates. That's where I found my copy of. So when we update the handbook, it will be added to it.
Well, the last handbook I have was 2012. So this is 2008. This, this note says 2008, but 2012 is the...
The memo gives permission to law enforcement, emergency management to take pictures, but the fire chiefs are wanting to expand it, or the fire chiefs to be allowed to take pictures, or someone they designate.
Could we possibly change it to just say you may not publicize them? Because...
I think they want to be able to publicize some of...
But individually speaking, I guess, I'm saying... I mean, someone may want to take a picture of the time or something, that something was happening in that moment, but then not be able to publicize it.
As of right now, I think the biggest issue is, is we have some departments that are following it and not allowing their volunteers to take pictures. And we have other departments that are not. But regardless, if they are going on a scene and they are photographing the scene, it becomes evidence. It can be subpoenaed and court-armed. And so they want to prevent who is taking these pictures. Maybe it's a little more, and I think that's why Mark is asking that at least the fire chiefs be allowed to. And I think a couple of the departments are going to start putting down a little bit harder on their volunteers. And maybe even end up being volunteers getting a new service because they're having such a issue.
I think we probably need some more input from the fire chiefs. And I think they just had a meeting here three or four weeks ago. I think they only meet quarterly. So I think maybe David could get ahold of them. Have them prepare to discuss it or something at the next fire chiefs' meeting, I would suggest. You know, we heard from, we heard from Juan that there's seven or eight.
Right. And I'll lie for his second hand, so I don't know exactly. Would it be okay if I give this to David and have him task at that meeting?
Yeah, I think so.
They're proposing those changes.
In fact, I think you could probably get it to him ahead of time. And that way they have time to review it, have some, have their ideas prepared.
It doesn't affect me, so I don't have issues.
I think he, he should probably coordinate it with the fire chiefs. He has, he has more access to them than we do.
Law enforcement needs to be involved too.
I'm wondering if we would legally be able to inhibit someone's right in a public situation? Probably not. You know, but in a, in someone's private home or an incident where it's not public property, I can see. But I don't know that we'd be able to legally inhibit someone from doing something in public, taking a picture in public.
I think if they're representing us at that scene, I think we can. I think if it's Joe Public, maybe we can. But I think if they're acting as a representative of the county, I think we probably can't.
I would ask that question. I think that's questionable, in my mind at least. You're inhibiting their individual rights.
Yeah, Norman? Is the issue invasion of privacy of the person whose picture is being taken?
Possibly.
But you'd get a release on that person whose picture is being taken. And we publish it. I mean, that's, yeah, I know, it's made so hard.
Something you have to be very careful about because you have victims out there that could have their picture taken and posted. That's the...
And it's voids for money.
And as quickly as you can post things on social media sometimes, bits of situation or posting people families even have a bunch of them there. It's not appropriate. And I think that's part of the reason why we have the policy that we have. I will pass it back as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Mike.
Sorry, we had a visitor in.
That's all right. Morning, Bob.
Morning, John.
Hi.
Okay, I think Steve and Bob are here. We'll just start with that before we get started. But you have Michael, that's okay.
I'd like to start with a little history. Once upon a time, nobody seems to know when, there was a gravel policy in Lincoln County. And it was very basic and said if an individual wanted to have a road worked on, they should... The county was pushing to stockpile gravel and mutually agreed upon site, load the gravel, spread and lay the gravel, pay the royalty. The landowner had to furnish the trucks to haul the gravel, the labor and the assumed cost of that. And there had to be enough trucks to effectively utilize the road. That was dated, actually, on 15th of August, 1983. And the odd thing about that is that the resolution 2012 repealed that, an unnumbered county resolution, and dated August 15th, 1983. So it was given the date of August 15th, 1983, and rescinded at the same time. And the new resolution, 2012, said, "Okay, we'll figure it on a case-by-case basis to encourage economic development in rural areas of Lincoln County." And we had started to think about moving to Lincoln County at that time. In 1987, we did. And oddly enough, we were unable to show that the fact that we had nine kids in school didn't seem to be economic development. So we ended up going back to the resolution that had been repealed. What we had was a gravel party and Jeanie Fixman-Ribich for five or six days. People that I didn't even know came up with their trucks and loaded gravel. You remember that, Bob?
Yeah.
And two miles of road got gravel. I was not smart enough at the time to know the difference between this kind of road and that kind of road. Probably not smart enough now, but I'm a better. This year, in May, the road maintenance agreement was signed with Steve Schneider in the county. Everybody signed off on it in a normal way. And it said that Schneider shall purchase and haul sand or rock to be placed on the road and have responsibility for it for five years, be responsible for placing material on the road and barrel across. Placing is not spreading, it's just dumping it out. And the county would do any repairs to drainage structures if necessary. The county would reshape the road where needed. And there was an agreement that everybody communicate and cooperate in good faith. That resulted in a map that was created by, well, it wasn't created by, the map that was put together by Steve. I think you've probably seen this map before. Maybe not? I don't know.
Yeah, last week he was showing it.
Basically, it's two sections of road, 45th and 50th and 45th road, about two miles, which struck me because that was the distance to our house in 1987. And part of that road was hard rock, bedrock, not bedrock, shale rock, shale rock, and things like that. Part of the road was not. And so the annotations on the side of the map showed what needed to be just hauled up from the ditches and crushed, and what actually needed to have some surfacing material put on, and what kind of surfacing material it was. Am I saying that correctly? Some of it's sand, where you had hard rock and you just need to have some grit, and some of it dirt. And in fact, if you want to have this for the record, you can have... Everything was going fine at that point, and then somehow there was a communication breakdown. The communication breakdown resulted in the whole two miles being, you know, mile and a half of these being piled up in the road, dirt, which made the hard rock, the earth pan and the shale rock area of the road worse because it was dirt on top of the hard surface. And the directions on the side of that map went off, followed for whatever reason. And I think Steve then pointed out that this was a default because in the original agreement signed in May, they were supposed to be mutually agreed upon before any work was done. So where we are now is trying to figure out how to get economic development done. And the reason I go back to economic development, I'm not sure how many people in Lincoln County realize how important the hunting economy is in Lincoln County. There are probably 12 or 15 hunting operations going on. For the most part, these are done as an adjunct to farming, but they've become very important financially to the county. You have pioneers, I suppose, like Merrill Nielsen. You have Steve Schneider, you have Jay Barksdale, that are working on and putting a lot of money into getting their lodges ready and attracting hunters from all over the country to pay off those notes. The couple of them, I think of David Wacker, I think of Steve Worth, have expanded beyond just hunting to specialized areas, growing birds and sending them all over the country, long-range shooting programs that attract even sniper force from the fort. And to the point that it swamps the agricultural impact to some extent. These are truly entrepreneurs, and I don't know how big the economic impact is in the county, but neither does Kelly, because I've been asking, and I just don't know, but it's significant. Given all of that, given the economic impact, and also, and not to be ignored, would be the fact that Steve's son has his house and lives on part of this road now, and has his own hauling business, I think what Steve would like to do would be just to move forward from this point and get the road done properly. And sometimes economic adjustment has to be made because of the work that is done. Went correctly, actually, a couple of months ago. There's been a lot of work done on the road. The ditches have been pulled up. Sometimes they're good, sometimes they're bad. It's a narrow road. Some of the culverts are too short, which we know about. When you have a 32-foot gate and a 24-foot culvert, and a very large semi trying to get through it, and it tips over and dumps out cattle or hay, you notice things like that. So that's what we're after, is to try to find some resolution that makes sense, yet this summer, to get the road in good shape.
Standard policy on culvert maintenance is 24 feet.
Right.
The person asking for a culvert placement, once it's expanded, will make it as long as they want to.
That's what I understand.
But they pay the cost of the 24 feet.
Yeah. And I don't think there's any argument about that. I don't know what the difference is.
You bring up the 24-foot culvert and the 32-foot gate, that's not hard.
No, but it gets in the way of economic development and helping people do the work that they need to do in the still extremely important area of agricultural development.
Something that happened there is when they high-graded the road and narrowed up the road's surface to drive on, so it changed the angle coming out the gate to some degree. That happened to Jay.
That's a lot of the reason why we don't improve a lot of 40-foot rideaways, because there is not enough room in a 40-foot rideaway.
Right.
To have drainage in the road though.
But that's exactly what happened. You want to come out the corner and just cut across, and the culvert's there, drop it off.
Anyway...
The culvert you're talking about had been in there a long time before we ever went and done anything that would put in the way back.
I know.
And nobody's requested anything different, so...
Absolutely.
Just what happened was, narrowed the road, just changed the radius and turned a little bit, is what happened.
I don't think the issue is blame. I think the issue is how do we go forward from this point? And every cattlemen, every farmer in Lincoln County probably has a 24-foot, they have one across the road from their house that's not in high ground. You have to learn where the two ends are when you drive in, even in a four-wheeler, you're not going to find anything else. So how do we go forward? That's really the question. Not to blame anyone for anything, but just to...
I guess you'd have to answer the question on whether the road was prepared properly or wasn't prepared properly. And there's a difference of opinion between Mr. Schneider and these guys, whether the road was prepared properly.
Well, from a technical point of view, there may be a difference of opinion. From an observer point of view, having six to 12, occasionally more inches of dirt on top of a hard base is not an advantage. From a legal point of view, the contract said that it had to be agreed upon before the work was done.
So then the question becomes, the conversation between Mr. Schneider and Mr. O'Hare, were you in agreement that particular sections of the road were to be high-graded?
We had several discussions about it. I know Steve had said there was a couple locations that he would like to see done, and I said that we will probably address the whole road in some way as we come through here. And well enough said. I believe he went through the project while they were working on it numerous times, never mentioned anything to us about the road through that process. And I do believe that the June 10th meeting, you thanked us for doing the road and thought we did a fine job. And then the following week, you come in and show us a map, and that you were upset with the way we did it. I'm kind of confused.
Previous map meeting, I brought forth some concerns since that area is in my district. I received a phone call, and I think you were on the agenda, and you messaged me to say that you were working that day and you weren't able to come in.
I was out there the day they started to talk to Rick Bobble before anything was even done, and he didn't know what he was doing. He just told the report there. I left there and I didn't come back till night, so I was not there numerous times looking at the project.
But you also stated last week that the water had been running down the road. That's why the ditch got filled. You said the water has been running down the road.
It runs off the hill, but there was ditches there. And it wasn't, it was not a water issue for any part of the road except on the hill at 1,700 feet. And as per the agreement that you wrote up, basically, it mutually agreed to grade where it needed and pull the rocks up on the rest of the road and crush them on the hard surface. That was what was supposed to happen.
I think we discussed that before when you were in there last week. I guess I should have videotaped the whole thing or something a couple of years ago. In them rock hill, I could see places the water run out across the road down. It didn't stay over on the side. If you put sand on that rock, it'd be just like putting some on here and throwing a glass of water on it. It'd all been in the ditch. Now we've got the water running off the road, and you've got something on there that'll hold your sand beside just on top of the rock. And this is, I told you the other day, go to a seminar, this is what they said. I like this out of Federal Transportation Book. Three most important things is ditch, ditch, ditch when you shape up a road.
You guys did a great job on grading and high-grading and everything, if you were going to gravel it. But you defeated the purpose of my sand on the hard surfaces that didn't need the dirt put on top of it.
I'm afraid I have to disagree with that, but that's your opinion, I guess, if you love them too.
The question is, is not to go backward, but go forward. And it's an economic development question because this affects two roads, well, it affects roads that are right now impacted by Steve's... You've got a four-bedroom lodge that's in place. Jay Barksdale, of course, has his own lodge out there, but he uses an adjacent manor. How do we go forward? I don't know what the economic costs are to grade, to put rock on the entire road. You had agreed to put rock on 1,700 feet or something like that?
Well, I was going to put sand on the whole...
Sand on, okay.
I have a question. The way that it was prepared, Bob, is that what is typically done across the board when you go in to get ready to gravel a road?
Yes.
Anywhere we do, we just like to say, it's here. First, most important thing is to get a ditch where the water will run off the road and down and not down and wander around all over the place. So I'm not going to, when I start grading the road, I don't just do a little here and jump down here a half a mile and do a little bit. I'm going to make that water go all the way so it'll drain off the whole length of the road and go down along the side, not zigzag and wander around the road anything.
And sometimes that doesn't work so well. Just south of our house... And sometimes that doesn't work so well, just south of our house, there's a steep hill, uh, the ditches are very, have been dug out several times, uh, there is probably a gravel pit worth of gravel that's gone off on the van, Van Amber side of the, at the bottom.
Well, that's what I explained, and you put that on a rock ledge, and you get a rain, it goes off.
Well, it was put on dirt, but the dirt was on the rock, and the rock was on a steep hill and the drainage wasn't, so it, it happens, it's erosion.
Normal.
Out of our control.
Good Lord, that is out, we don't.
Back to the resolution of the two thousand two, that county, it's our resolution to gravel for economic benefit. You know, I've asked you, what, what, what distance, you said it's too far, too expensive, too everything, but you would never, ever say how far you would go, how much money you would spend. So then I ask you about what it costs to gravel a mile, and you said fifteen thousand dollars. So then I ask you what's the cost of your gravel, a dollar a yard, to you, that's what you lease it out of.
Yeah, to uncover it.
Uncovered, yes. But it was also said in there that basically graveling the road or doing anything like that's already figured into the budget, so it isn't over and above, so basically it just comes down to the cost of the gravel, is what it comes down to. And I offered to pay for the thirty-five hundred and twenty dollars for the seventeen hundred and fifty yards it would take to do two miles, or per mile, but you never made a counter offer. Never, never heard anything that just came back to, you paid for all the rock, put it on there, and it was a little shape for you. That's, that was your counter offer.
We also had an agreement that you were gonna sand the road too.
I was, but then you deferred the purpose of my sanding the road when you, I did more than what was called for, more than what was agreed to. It says in your agreement what specific things you were going to do.
So I think the question, I keep wanting to come back to the question from an economic development point of view, how many hunting parties do you suppose you had last year?
At least a dozen.
At least a dozen, and the year before that?
Oh, probably, I have a group that comes every year, five, five.
And it seems to have more interest now than before.
It does, and every, every year just continually grows.
And, uh, when it comes to economic development, people talk a lot about entrepreneurship. I'm not an entrepreneur, I'm, I'll freely admit that, but I've helped a lot of entrepreneurs, I've worked with them a lot. They do things that are stupid, and it turns out well, and I think they need to be encouraged. And this is turning out very well, and looks like it could turn out even better. And the more that Lincoln County becomes known across the country as a hunting place, where, and there are probably, I said at least a dozen of them. I imagine there are a dozen to fifteen different, Leon Hard is still doing hunting parties, I think, that's at a different scale, but they're all over the county. And there are more coming down the, down the road, and the pheasants that David sends out might as well have messages on their beaks that they came from Lincoln County. And, uh, there's the Steve Worth Shooting Gallery, it's close enough to our house that I worry a little bit about those two mile shots, but to me, and I think I would encourage to you, this should be an economic development issue, which was part of the resolution in two thousand twelve. Two thousand, two thousand.
Seems to me that we're arguing about something that hasn't been completed. We don't know whether when you put that sand, if that road's gonna be good or not. You're claiming without even putting it on, it's bad. Bob, who has spent his lifetime doing this, says that probably he may have benefited you by putting some other material on that, and I can tell you, personal experience, sand without something to bond it to is worthless, in my opinion. We've got sand over in our country, if it's just sand, it's, it's bad. The roads are bad. So I guess, you know, I think we can talk, uh, after you do your job and see what happens. If it, if it's a failure, then maybe we need to address, we're both probably going to have to do some addressing, but until you fulfill your part of this obligation, we're arguing about something we don't know. Maybe it's gonna be, maybe it's gonna be a good deal, I don't know.
It might be, but you violated agreement before we even got started.
We didn't violate the agreement.
It's a default on your part, that's what I'm calling.
I don't believe we violated your agreement, I will disagree with you there. I think that our men went out and graded the road, their experience, and they did what they thought needed to be done. Now, you can say that that wasn't what the agreement meant, and I guess we're gonna say that's probably what it didn't mean. And I, to me, until we see the final result, we don't know.
Are you saying that if he spreads the sand, or puts the sand where he wanted to, and puts the gravel where he wanted to, the way the agreement read, that's adequate?
I am not, I'm, I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying this road has not been completed. We're arguing about that we've destroyed the road, and we don't even know whether we have destroyed the road, 'cause it's not complete.
You haven't destroyed the road, I don't think Steve was saying that, I think what he's saying is it's made it more difficult to get the road in serviceable shape.
And we disagree with that.
And you disagree with that.
And we disagree.
I don't, I don't think, I didn't think sand was gonna work from the very beginning. If Steve's idea to try the sand, that's why the agreement says for five years, we're not gonna be responsible for it.
It does say, and it says he showed.
Because I don't think it's gonna work.
Purchase and haul material, sand or rock, and it does say you needed to agree and mutual agreement, and so there's plenty for our lawyers to argue about, and that would be a total waste of money. What we're after is trying to get the road from here to there, and so I'm asking a question, if Steve goes ahead and, and puts sand down where he wanted to according to that map that you've got, and puts rock in the other places, can we go forward from that point?
And receive what from the county?
Serviceable grading of the road.
Before I agreed to that, but back to the responsibility of the county, and that, and that's what I'm talking about, prior to the installation of material by Snyder, county hereby agrees to reshape the road where needed and as agreed to by the parties. County should roll over the existing rock areas. Right there, it spells it all out in your sentence, this was all road to your advantage, and you did not follow it.
Michael, were you on site when the grading was taking place?
I was not.
So you weren't there, but you're the one that agreed to the agreement, and Bob was the one that was on site. That's the miscommunication that I'm seeing. I'm seeing that the agreement was written with your understanding, but then it was a different person on site when it happened.
Do you disagree with the way it was done?
I do not. Did you tell Bob how to do it? Did you tell him about the agreement?
This is what I go by on any road.
I know, did he tell you, did he?
I hadn't seen the agreement, so I.
But he did not, he did not relay to you what was agreed to and what was supposed to happen?
After this all started, yeah. Even if I'd seen the agreement, even if I'd have seen the agreement, I would have still went out there and graded it that way, because just like it says in there, the ditches, the drainage, that's the most important part of the road.
Well, then there was some miscommunication, I believe, there was some miscommunication at the front end because the agreement.
And Steve and I insisted that I would address the entire road.
But what he's saying.
The very first conversation that he had, that he said he would like to see that done, but later communication, I told you we would address the whole road.
But what Bob just said is that he graded it like he would any road to apply gravel. I think that's the real issue.
The area he's talking about had water running down the road, he said that last week.
If it was, it's only for a hundred yards right on the break of the hill, and that hadn't been a problem. All the other road had been high graded in previous years, and there was no drainage problem for the rest of the road for a mile or more.
Let me come back and ask, in, in the commission's opinion, the interpretation that we have of the agreement is different from the interpretation we have, and I understand that. But going forward, if Steve goes ahead and puts the sand where he wanted it and where it shows on that map, and puts the rock there, based with the rock in that other part, will the county come back and grade that road?
Yeah.
And maintain it?
The agreement all along was that we would, we would spread the dirt. There's no material right now to spread.
No, there's not. But if there were, would it go, would it be done?
Sure. I don't see any reason why it won't.
We still got the five year.
For the five years to provide material.
Yes.
Not to do the grading.
Correct.
We will continue to do the grading.
Yeah, yeah.
And for a lot of new roads with new surface material, the grading has to be done more often than we.
Shouldn't happen.
Correct. And we would hope that would happen.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why it wouldn't, that was the agreement. He put material, he'd bring material, we'd spread it, we'd maintain it.
But you're not, but you're not following the two thousand two resolution. And you won't define that resolution. You either use the resolution or you repeal it, and nobody gets a road anywhere.
I was under the impression that you chose sand because you felt that it may work.
Yeah, it's cheaper.
Cheaper, that's cheaper instead of.
Right, but I wasn't under the impression that you wanted to sand the whole road, I thought that was the reason that, that the packed rock was existing, so you didn't feel that, that needed material, but what you're saying is if we prepared it to be gravelled over the whole thing, you have to provide material over the whole thing because there's something on top of.
We was gonna sand the whole road, but you know, there was a lot of base there that would have helped.
You had no intention of covering it.
Have no intention of anything with it.
The base is still there, isn't it Bob?
It's still there. You're talking.
Pile down.
Who measures sand?
Plan on housing.
Put a dirt on it.
A stretch of sand. And then a stretch of nothing, and then a stretch of sand, is that what you're proposing?
No, I can put sand on the whole thing, plus even may put a little rock in the flood area for the seventeen hundred feet that was supposed to be graded. Probably the other issue to me is that I see you gravel the road here, there by a being, five, two miles away, a road to nowhere, nobody uses it. You said for Osmond County residents, and I wonder how much taxes Osmond County residents taxes pay in our county.
I think it's a reader.
I didn't say anything, I just said that people travel into there both ways on there, out and in, and other people use it besides you, trying to say it just hunters, and there's more people than that use it.
So I went around the township right there, and there's probably five miles that are gravel roads that have no use or no, no bases for it, nobody lives there, nobody uses them. So you take however many townships there is in Lincoln County, and you take that times five, so you got about a hundred and fifty miles of gravel roads that really don't need gravel, which is less than what you need to do.
I don't think all townships are alike, I mean, you'd go out there to Elkhorn, Franklin, some of those that have somebody living on every road.
Yeah.
Doesn't compare with Steedran where there are very few people live.
Hard gravel or word gravel, back then when there were original gravel, there were residents living on those roads. People who passed away, moved on, whatnot, so there's a lot of vacant houses and stuff out there on these roads that were gravelled previous years way back.
They won't be given to regravel if it's not a through.
They won't be regravel again, only the main, only the main.
They don't need, need regravel by the.
If they're dead ends or just service a home that nobody lives in any longer, we do not.
I think what we've done so far is to clarify several things this morning. First thing we've clarified was that when the county prepared this agreement, it prepared it somewhat ambiguously, because it didn't say what both parties wanted it to say. It says things that can be interpreted contrary to what you're now saying, and contrary to what you're now saying, so there was some difficulty preparing the agreement. Going on beyond the, the agreement itself, I think we've clarified that no matter what the agreement was, the road department was going to do things according to the drainage instructions for the KDA people all over the state, no matter what the agreement said, which was not something that was said to Steve ahead of time. The third thing we've identified is that what's there is there, and I think what's been said is that if you go ahead and put the sand on the road the way you intended to, and the rock just where you intended to, when you said maybe a little more in the mud hole, then the county would come in and grade and keep the road up to some basic level. From an economic development point of view, if you're a house on the road point of view, is that something that would work? Would you be willing to do that?
I don't think the county ever planned on not maintaining the road. I think that was part of the original intent. No matter what material he placed, the county still was.
Is that section of fiftieth to forty-fifth, is that minimum maintenance road?
No.
No.
Goes under the dam there.
Steve, Steve actually talked about wanting to close that road.
I did, I mentioned sand in the minutes.
Yeah, and have you decided you want to do that?
I have no objection to closing that research road.
Forty-fifth.
Round thing. I mean, we will have a hearing on it, and if there's objections to it, and they're good objections, no, we won't close it.
Do you want to have a hearing scheduled for that?
Yeah, why don't we?
Or I won't, I won't vote to close it, if there's people that want it open, who think they need it open for certain reasons.
When do you, when would you have time for a hearing on that?
Oh, it takes. How long, Don, do we, it takes us a while to research the road, and then how long do we have to publish it?
Uh, you publish it to this interview.
Okay.
I think I'd like to see a request in writing.
Absolutely.
But Mr. Schneider wanted to close it.
No problem.
My understanding was we were going to do it, but we're not.
I remember that as well.
I didn't hear you, Donna.
I, it was my understanding that we could close that road and rip the spines, so that's why we haven't done it.
All right.
I have no idea if anybody would use that road. I think it's a liability down below that dam, it probably never should have been done in the first place, I'm not.
Dams have a habit of leaking after a few decades. So, are you willing to put the sand down?
Yep. I'm willing, I'll put, do my part with what my sand is, I just want the county to.
According to them.
Meet their end of their obligation.
And you have a copy of that now?
Of the map?
Yeah.
That's the first I've ever seen, that map.
We got a map the other day, but it wasn't.
That was last week, he dropped that in, but I know I've seen one marked here and here and here and here.
I have a suggestion Bob, is it possible that we could send out the grader to meet Mr. Schneider, and maybe they could go over a few things that he would like tweaked, and he could spend a day out there? I mean, is that possible, that he could?
We're supposed to do that, every person in the county that thinks they want a road, and they're an engineer.
Different than what we normally would do.
I don't do it any different than I do anybody else's road.
I know, but what you're telling me is that you prepared it for gravel, and I'm.
No, I prepared it, sure, sure, see, not for gravel, not for sand, I just prepared the road.
Bob is right in everything that he's saying, he goes all the roads the same way. The problem was that the county prepared a contract that didn't agree with KDA. That was the start of the problem, just as.
Doesn't matter to opinion, I guess.
But the special circumstances surrounding the need.
The area that he's talking about had water running down the road. You understand that part of it? He said so last week.
But the water down that hill was not a problem.
Water running down the road is a problem, whether it's on a hill or in a valley or worse.
Probably maybe a hundred yards, rest of the ditches from that point down from the crest of that hill was not an issue.
Are you saying that the water running down the road, that's, wherever the water was running down the road, was the reason to elevate a portion of the road?
It's the reason to put a ditch though.
It's the reason why we ditch all roads.
Yes, and there's.
To make the water flow down the ditch instead of the road.
I don't want to litigate this with Jennifer or anyone else, and I don't think the county should want to have to pay the litigation that's basically based on some misunderstandings as well. I think there's a way of going forward, getting the road done over time. A lot's been done already because of the work you've laid, uh, if there are some short culverts, that's something that has to be addressed, and the difference in price and something like that. But this, to me, should be viewed as an economic development issue, more than a technical issue of how the road should have been done, or how the agreement should have been written.
And it was back to the previous board commissioners that told me that they would put me a gravel road into my lodge at the time, of you, you were a member.
Now, you, you were a member.
I think you, you state that, but I think they researched further back.
They have. It is not in minutes. Dwight Heller would come and say, he told me that, and that's what the board discussed, and that's what he told me. And you were on the board.
I don't remember, I don't remember making any kind of agreement, and I can assure you if there was some kind of agreement made, it would have been in minutes.
It may have been a voiced opinion.
What a commissioner tells someone on their own, I can't control.
Basically, I asked Dwight about that, and he brought it to the commission. I didn't feel it was necessary probably for me to come. And it shouldn't be that everybody has a hole in their road or a culvert has to come to the commission meeting to get it addressed. And that seems to what's happened over time. Otherwise, you wouldn't have all these people here. I'm assuming from what you've said, that the contract in your opinion is still valid.
We put stuff on the road, we'll spread it, we'll maintain it just like we said we would.
For that mile and a half?
Yes.
And it can be put on the road the way, I'll go back to the chart there, except you expanded that and said you want to put sand on. I, I was looking at putting sand on the road, two miles. And it don't need spread. When he puts it on there, they put it on there uniformly, then it don't need spread, so grading is not really an issue on the deal.
Have we done 45th?
45th really don't need anything. Got ditches, got drainage.
They didn't want anything on that.
So wait, now I'm confused. If we don't need.
And he's looking to close it. Therefore, why would he prove the road and invest money in something that he's going to request to close?
No guarantee.
But if it was just stated that we, if we're going to resurface a road, we do them all the exact same, and if we're going to resurface 50th and 45th, why?
We're not resurfacing 45th.
You're not planning on putting any material on 45th?
I am, but all the way. My contention is they overgraded 50th road to what was agreed to.
Why would we do that on a road you're wanting closed?
There is no guarantee it's going to be closed.
I think I'd wait and see if it was closed.
But I'm going back to the fact that if, if there was going to be gravelled from Union to the driveway, which is up 50th and across 45th, why would that entire section not have been prepared all in the same manner? It's all going to receive the same topic.
Because our understanding was that he wanted to close 45th.
At the time we were grading that, I thought he said he was going to close it, so we didn't picture it. We don't go and fix everybody's private driveway, and that's what it'll turn into be if it's closed, would be his private guy.
If he's going to petition to close the road, we're going to approve it.
In the end of the agreement, the only thing you were supposed to grade was basically the 1700 feet on the hill where there was a low lying drainage issue and correct the drainage issue. That's what your agreement says. And pull the rock up on the road and crush it and not do anything with the rest of it.
I didn't see anything happen.
Michael and I discussed this, and this is what I told him, but he did not relay that to you.
But you and I did discuss after that that I would be addressing the entire mile and a half of that road.
Pulling up the ditches and doing that, just filling in the ruts that when I plow, I'm going to have to drive in there, basically just reshape the road as needed. It wasn't about high grading, it was reshape the road as needed, and that's what the agreement says.
And that's what we did.
Well, that, you're reshaping and I'm reshaping.
Your opinion.
It's possible. We just finished discussing this a couple times already.
You're not going to finish discussing it, Bob. It's not going, you're not going to ever finish discussing it.
And I think we should learn from it and move forward with it, because, because the whole reason stated, and I, you're going to go ahead and do it? I'll put the sand on there. Okay. And do you know how long that'll be? I do not know how soon you can get to it. I've been waiting. I just put the culverts in on top of the hill Friday.
They're in.
Yeah, seen them. And thank you for that.
We didn't tear them out when we did the road because it was harvest time and we know how much traffic and stuff would be there, so we didn't want to interfere at that time.
But are you thinking it'll be a week, a month, a year? Probably weeks, two weeks, maybe a plus. Does that work?
We'd probably like to be notified when we do it.
Okay.
So they can. Be prepared.
Lay after something we needed.
But I don't think you're going to tell them to tie a road, you'll have to blade out there somehow to spread it.
This would do. I would do what Martin's supposed to do on this, and then we'll litigate to this later. I mean, me to be a traitor to my profession, but I hope we don't have to litigate the rest of it. Thanks to me and Michael, well.
Thank Bob.
Thank you.
Steve, Mike, what else you got?
Um, here, I will fill it here for the, uh, three red rock pit.
One year. Located northwest, northeast of Barnum.
Northeast, yes, correct.
So has anyone spoken with you about Gene Maitler's gravel pit?
We will, we'll shortly. We'll get through what he wants to talk about.
All right, uh, do I have a motion to?
I've moved to.
Under to an agreement from Mark Murray. For one year. Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, my question would be what, what are the current, what is the current situation as far as where we're calling gravel or what, what we're paying now? I'm, I'm assuming this last discussion we had about buying some out of county, what, what was that costing us?
Six seventy-five, you know, say it.
So is there a reason that we were purchasing out of county at that price instead of from anyone?
Well, it's clear up for a home, clear up in that corner of the county, and it was as close up there as was to any of our other pits.
Objective was to try the gravel and see how it works. You wanted to explore the possibilities on gravel they are.
So we were going to do this stretch for, to see how it worked, whether we wanted to pursue more gravel up there or not from that area, or whether we just forget that up there. But the only way to really know is put it on the road and leave it and try it for a while, see what it does.
Does that have any of that limestone in it? Is that?
It's a, kind of like a regular gravel. It's small, it has.
Natural stone.
Natural stone, but it's not limestone crushed like comes from up there. This is a natural gravel pit.
That's Mitchell, right? Was it Mitchell County?
No, this comes from Osmond County.
I guess I'm just.
It was already uncovered and piled and everything already. It was all that stuff.
Any other discussion on the Mark Murray pit? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion is carried. And Michael?
Um, I have an individual I'd like to, uh, employ for seasonal and to be utilized as, uh, someone to help out on the bridge crew. We are short of employee, and it looks like we will continue to be short for a while longer. If not, definitely pending situations that, uh, this individual is a former employee and has some experience with our bridge building and the equipment that we operate currently and everything else, too, so.
You're going to have a blade that's going to need covered too, aren't you, from going in?
I guess. It'd probably be a month out. I'm going to probably start looking here, here to advertising.
For a grader operator?
Yes.
So you're saying this is a seasonal employee, part-time? I mean, what, what's a seasonal? What do you mean by that?
Well, we, we've been advertising for seasonal help, which initially would have been for mowing, stuff like that. But instead of filling, a position to do mowing, we will benefit much more by having someone that is experienced to assist with bridge building operations at this moment.
So are we talking about 1,000 hours a year? Are we talking about more than 1,000? What are we talking?
Thousand. Thousand or whatever.
Less than, less than 1,000? So if we won't be.
Providing help.
Employee benefit package will not be applied, right? Kind of a, right? I would guess.
With the possibility it could, it could be.
Yes.
We could move it, we could re-status him, I guess.
Starting wage on that would be 1230 for the bridge crew.
1230?
Yes, sir.
And he can come to work immediately after drug testing or?
Yes.
And are you planning on having him work the rest of the year?
Yes, or until we have a status change with the bridge crew. Now, if a position becomes available, full-time position becomes available, and this individual seems to be doing a good job and fit for that position, I would like to offer that position.
So he is a.
Do you have a name?
He could possibly be, uh, full-time. Is that what you're saying? I mean, he could possibly come in to have a full-time position. He's not somebody that just wants to work 1,000 hours. No, okay.
Did you have quite a few applicants?
No. I believe two.
This was your choice, that two?
Yes.
For the part-time?
Robert, exactly.
I would move to Bruce Island, part-time, 100,000 hours. Robert Zacco, 1230.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
When, when was the employment of this hirry previously?
What's that?
When was he previously employed by the county?
It shows on here.
A long time ago?
Eighty-six to ninety-seven, several years ago. Eighty-six, twenty years, no, probably.
Okay. And was that during the time when we were building our own bridges, and you're saying he was part of that?
He didn't necessarily assist in building.
He ran the grader, he done a little bit of everything.
But he does have some experience with bridges, as in repairs and work like that.
And you worked here for 10 years then?
Yes.
I'm sure in 10, 11 years or so, he had the opportunity to help on the bridge.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion is carried.
I don't need to sign to it. Deborah's going to bring something down.
Yeah, she's here.
And, uh, I visited with, uh, Mr. Roger with APAC. I don't know if he gave you a call, he wanted to visit with you.
Did you find out anything additional on that?
Um, he invited me to come out, and I, I'll do that with him to tour. I guess mainly he, um, expressed that that one inch roadstone is a pretty popular purchase. And how many years have we done that? Just last year and this year? He wasn't quite sure.
We've used it off and on, but not like we have recently, starting last fall and this spring where it's been extremely wet. You know, it did bring a lot of places that looked good to bad due to the weather we had. You know, after numerous years of drought, you don't realize that some of those places are as bad as they were. And this is a material that we could lay down a lot quicker and.
And we could access it.
Yes, access was the.
This red rock pit that we just, we did, if we had money to hire a crusher to come in, that would be similar to what we're getting out of Portso.
At the Red Rock pit?
The Red Rock pit, yes. It's, it's really hard rock and it needs to be crushed. And we did crush a pile five years ago.
How long? I think it's been longer than that now.
Twenty years ago, you lived in the gene well.
Yeah, how many?
I suppose close to 20.
Oh, it's been, it's been that long because it was here, I was here. I'm not quite that old, Jim.
It was after I retired. Maybe seven or eight years ago.
Probably then seven or so. And I believe I was, you know.
Because I retired in '02 and it wasn't, hadn't been done then.
Yeah.
Sometime later after that, so.
We've used most of that pile.
Yeah.
Not all of it, mostly not.
Some of them you don't crush it up too fully, and that last time, I'm affected, it's still too soft. Whackers, I got all powder, and it's just like baby smog.
Whackers is a, a lot softer rock than, uh, what the Murray's is. Um, and over time, it did break down a lot quicker. But when it was initially put down, you know, it was, it had a lot of inch and a half in it, but it did break down rather quickly.
Crush this part of that rock, have it cleaned, it's too hard now, it's going to damage the tires. What do you hear that on?
Not with the red rock I have it, but I have with the.
Well, you know, you're going to hear it no matter what we do.
Bring us the thing up.
Yeah.
Ask them what they prefer, muddy rock or black powder.
You'll get a 50/50 answer on that, Bob.
All meter off.
Other crushed concrete, turn it out.
We have, stopped by the office.
I'm interested to know that as well, the crushed concrete.
I believe we discussed it last week, the week before, but, uh, it, it turned out to be a product less than desirable, in my opinion.
For what purpose?
Being placed on a gravel road.
As a topping?
Yes.
So if we can't use it as a topping, what can we use it as?
The method, yeah.
Potential. That's not a guarantee. We'll need to try it.
Bad holes, stuff like that, not surface the whole road, just fix some really bad places like some of these springs or something we've had.
Tried on some of those places. Last week, you know, it could potentially be used in a place where we've had some springs and we need to put some base back on.
So is there a plan in place to ask your blade operators to turn in certain particular areas where they think that you could use something like that? I mean, how are you going to, how are you going to plan where to place it?
We need to try.
Depending on the weather conditions like this year, we've had springs pop up on roads that we've never seen them before, so we can't really plan. We're going to go here, here, here. We have to take it on a, on a happens basis, what the mother nature hands us, and try it there.
Ultimately, you got to, we got to shut down the gravel trucks to fix the dirt road also. And 90% of the population would rather see us be getting gravel roads improved and or replaced over a dirt road that they're not having an issue with currently while it's dry. You know, yeah, they're going to complain a little bit when it gets wet, but most people would rather see us get the gravel roads going than shut down a crew to start fixing dirt. But if time allows and we get to it, we will work on it.
But then the question becomes, do you have gravel roads where there are these soft spots that you can place the base of the concrete before you apply new gravel and let it wash?
If there is, we will.
If there is, but the question is, do, do we have that? I just, you know, I know you get tired of me saying things about planning because you always have a, a response about you have to wait and see or things pop up that. always have a, a response about you have to wait and see or things pop up that are unforeseen, but that is life and unfortunately, you do have to curtail plans. I just fail to see plans being brought to the table and I understand you can't always follow the plan, but if there, if there's no plan in existence to begin with, then really, it's just kind of a free-for-all and you make decisions based on what you feel or who contacts you first or, you know, what your personal preferences are. And I think that's been a complaint that maybe you're taking personally, but that's not really the issue. It's, it's have a plan and when you deviate from the plan, that's expected, but to have a plan in the first place is still what I would like to see. And we all know that rain happens, we all know that the good Lord brings situations that we can't control, as you say, and I totally agree with that. But a lack of a plan in general is what I'm wondering why, why we can't address that.
I do have that. We set out, we're gonna go this road, this road, this road, we're gonna try to fix this bridge, but as things come along, we have to eliminate this and go do this because of situations, but...
Okay, so first example...
I have a schedule that I try to work, I can work on the one up there, boys are getting ready over here, ready, and we're working out, try to keep it scheduled, but when something else happens, we got it, it rains, we can't work there, go somewhere else, or if we have a bridge falling in here, we go here and sit here. Yeah, I got a schedule where I wanna go, what we need to do, that makes sense. Can't just look at it and say, oh, tomorrow I'm gonna do this, because it doesn't always work that way. It's always, past years always worked fine, never had any problems with it, so...
Well, I'm a little concerned with that because if we feel that everything's fine, what are we going to do? Terry, you can laugh, but what, what do you plan on doing about the bridges?
He just told you, he just told you that he has a plan.
Have you seen it?
He knows where he's going next.
Have you seen this plan?
I don't know, but I need to see it. I don't run that far.
Have you seen this plan, Mr. Chairman?
No, I have not seen a plan.
I don't want to do this, I don't want to try to plan where to send all these people and stuff all the time.
Well, that's my other question. I'm not sure how, how this plan is, is working its way between the, the hierarchy that we have, because if it's your plan and the, the head of the department here doesn't really know either, and we don't know, I'm not sure how everyone plays a role in making that happen because, Terry, you can laugh, but you know, we do have a bridge situation. Are we just, are we going to not, are we gonna not address it? Are we just gonna pretend that it doesn't exist, that, that we really don't have the money to go forward and fix all the bridges that are going to need fixed desperately in the near future?
I don't think there's any way we can fix all the bridges that we've fixed. There's no way.
So we're just going to continue to sit here and say, I don't think it's possible, there isn't any way? Is that really what's gonna happen?
We keep... We're working on bridges, we're working on them all right today. Have we been discussing buying that spare pile driver so they can start building bridges?
Yes, we have. You can't buy equipment and put it to use without a plan in place. And I guess, I'm just saying, here we are revisiting this and who's playing with it?
We've got a list of bridges back at the office that we could probably build tomorrow if we had the equipment, that are in a position where they need to be done.
I would appreciate you to see that list, personally. And it would be nice for you to bring it to the commission meeting next week.
What else you got, Michael? It's all I have. Bob, you got anything for us today?
Yeah, I have a new pair of pipelines that want to cut across the road up here by Denmark repair line. They've got a bad spot right...
They want to cut the road?
Yeah, it's right in the road. They're gonna have to replace that section of pipe. And he says until they get there, he does not know whether they'll have to go through the road or whether, they're showing it's right on the edge of the road. So they may have to go, not go in the road, but they want to permit to be able to, which shows up that they need to.
Basically, they scanned it with a pig and they know there's a bad spot within a certain range. So until they get everything opened up, they're not gonna know one hundred percent of the pinpoint.
What, what road is this?
It's...
Hundred Thirty?
It's Thirties, uh-huh. About a mile east of Denmark Church.
Went across last year, they're like, what was it?
Yeah. That's where I thought first when you first called me and talked to me about it, up there.
Okay.
And I think they finally got one east of my place back in and covered it up, but that pipeline there, back in, all covered back, so...
Have they got it crossed correct?
They're still, they're still fighting that. He said that, that's what he told me, twenty, twenty-three or twenty-eight feet down and they dug out, now the banks are caving in, so they had to start, start going back further and further trying to get down.
Yeah, I see they've gotten across the road. Norman, did you have something?
Yeah, two, last week or two weeks ago, I just had eight, I just had a contamination problem with this crushed concrete. Have you looked into that? Is there anywhere you're gonna be able to neutralize it? Can you spread it? And my next comment is, on this huge, I've issued this cutting, log and this stuff, now we're crossing into a commercial, a commercial enterprise. Are we gonna have to rezone this? And have you classified it as commercial type, so we can go up?
We don't have zoning.
I know, but I'm...
But it can be reclassified as commercial property, it's a good...
Actually, it can't anymore.
It can? Okay.
Ron had told me that there was a state statute that was passed last year that means all of those tiny bridges now are considered as property.
Okay. There's your answer. Okay.
Do you have a source from the state of Kansas on this concrete contamination? Or is it just California?
This, this has been published in the newspaper in the past. This is a big issue out there, it's taken from international, Denver, when they shut it down, they tore up all the concrete, yeah, like it's in the news.
I would just like to make one comment on this agreement. Being that we had so many complaints about Wilson, um, fiber going in along the road, maybe we could just, when they complete the work, ask that if we need to have additional materials placed, that they cover that cost, because I think it would have been nice to follow through on, on that with Wilson. And I know we needed time to let the road pack down and whatnot, but I'm pretty sure we had extra time on our end, going back and regrading and trying to shape that up, whereas if we had charged them for some extra material, you know, that's to our benefit in that case, because they're making money off of, you know, the property, using that property of ours, so that's my only comment.
They were just in the vesper, repairing some stuff from three years ago. Probably what I did, Bob, or just within the last couple of weeks, like...
And I'm sure they'll do just like they did over there, they said they'd backfill all that and then fill it in and take any problem.
And I know we had a lot of rain in the spring, but remember those ruts? I mean, if coming and fixing it's one thing and then give, adding materials is a whole nother ballgame.
I'd move to enter the Achilles permit with Rocky Mountain line systems.
I'll second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, have you guys done?
I would say...
I'd say, I'd say, I was just doing the grabbing and working on the bridge, so...
We need to open bids, we're running behind. I think there's some people here who open those bids. There you go for that. Don, I think you're gonna have to come up here and help me. I sorted through some of this, but I'm a little confused.
Okay, those were the bids that were received and then?
Yeah, and then here I have one for EMS, I don't have anything else, and there's County Courthouse. Then I have this, this...
Okay, this is mine, but Bill had done it overall. Bill had done it overall.
Yeah, I, I took them, I took them, I took them apart and then the other one I have here is Lincoln Park Manor was already done, right?
Yeah, didn't he do it overall, but?
Overall, I, I just, he's just got each one I've broken down.
Okay.
Everyone's broken down.
So the damages that, um, the insurance found?
Okay. So we will start with, uh...
Courthouse.
Courthouse? Courthouse screens. I only have, I have the storage shed, that's different, right?
That's different.
Okay. I have only one bid for the courthouse.
Remove and replace seventy-four window screens with new metal screen comb and straighten AC condenser fins on twelve units. Three thousand nine hundred dollars.
You got one we had? Is that close to what?
Um...
Can you tell?
Not right off, let me add.
I can be precise, I'm sorry. Courthouse was three thousand nine, nine hundred and forty dollars, six six.
And that was?
Three thousand nine hundred even.
Okay. Do we want, do these individually? Motion them individually?
It might be that you'd use...
Okay. We only have one bid, Hill Construction's the only bid we have. I have a motion to accept his bid.
I would move.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Move second to accept Cory Hill's bid on Hill Construction on courthouse for three thousand nine hundred dollars, thereabouts. Questions?
My question is how, how, when, um, the information was given on us soliciting bids, how was it given? Did we give separate projects and ask for separate bids or?
I photocopied what the insurance company gave us as to what the damages were.
And then they were to reply according to that? Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, courthouse storage shed is next, we have three bids.
Wait, we didn't vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry. I thought we voted. You were discussing.
Sorry.
Since Cory had the totals, I felt like it was appropriate to give the other people the votes as well.
Yeah, that's fine.
This is on the storage shed, I have one from Hill Construction for three thousand six hundred and forty dollars.
Dale Coit Roofing, two thousand six hundred, two dollars and forty-five cents for total. Sorry, can you read that again? Two thousand six hundred and two forty-five cents. Dale Coit Roofing out of Coffeyville. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Okay, Terry.
Everything fine?
The innovating exteriors, two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven seventy-five. These are Tamco, is that where he was bidding?
Three tab composition.
Malarki's what I'm getting, legacy.
Malarki is the, um, impact resistive one.
Yeah, the impact.
How much are we being allowed?
We are being allowed two thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and eleven cents.
So that bid's over, correct?
I don't, we don't want three tabs. I don't want three tabs.
You know what's what?
Three tabs, yeah.
No, no. What are those?
These are Tamco heritage, thirty-year.
Thirty-year.
Thirty-year Tamco heritage.
Yes, I did, and also part of my deal is on that is we have plastic gutters on that building, which are junk, and we're gonna get around the whole thing.
That's included in that bid?
It's, I believe it says it on...
Yeah, gutters downspout, seventy-five foot, fifty in downspout.
But you're saying you're gonna replace them as metal, whereas the existing structure was plastic?
Well, you just are about plastic on here, on here, insurance.
So you're giving us the same price as what the allotment was for the plastic?
He has the gutters too.
I'd move to approve the bid on the courthouse storage building, innovating interiors.
I'll second.
Two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars, seventy-five cents.
Okay, it's been moved, second, innovating...
Interiors.
Interiors.
Exteriors.
Exteriors, uh, for the courthouse, um, storage shed. Okay, we'll move on to...
Oh, oh.
What?
Need to vote.
Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have Sheriff's Department.
Could you please tell us the insurance allotment? Four thousand nine oh nine sixteen.
I have two bids for Hill Construction. One of them is to Malarki Legacy Impact Resistant Shingles for eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and put downspouts and gutters too. And then I also have a metal roof for eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I think we did that because we had full foot bid a couple of years ago for metal roof.
Yeah.
That's an option.
What is the, are we allowed to accept the bid without the downspouts and gutters though? Because that is not, that's not part of what the insurance is covering, correct?
It is not, uh, right now. However, I think that Cory had contacted, um, the insurance company directly to tell them that the guttering is not as good, um, on it as well.
I mean, are we assuming they're going to cover it?
I'm gonna assume that they eventually will, I just haven't heard back from Justin about it.
So just for a comparative value then, could you please tell us his bid without the, the gutters and downspout?
No, I cannot.
I can contact him and ask him to...
Just that he can't see, we can't...
He's considered... He was eight thousand.
Yeah, but have some gutters here.
Dale Coit Roofing, total at four thousand four hundred and ninety even. And that is tear off existing roof to wood decking, sixteen squares, and install new thirty-year laminated shingles and thirty-pound felt for eighteen squares. And there's an additional charge for a two-story building for the sixteen squares.
Uh, innovating exteriors. Total bid's four thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight fifty. Thirty-year Tamco heritage.
There's no guttering on that one? Yeah.
On that one, that one is, I believe it has an impact resistant upgrade to your, I gave you the options of having it regular thirty-year heritage or...
Impact resistant.
Impact resistant, the impact resistant is...
Maybe in the notes, maybe?
I think it's notes on the line.
Seven hundred and two dollars, but is that included in the total?
It is included at all.
So if we take, if we go with the thirty-year Tamco, we take seven hundred and two off of the total price?
If not, which is what you have?
a separate bid then for just that portion as well. We have to have the bid separated, because the bid that we received from them, from the other company is combined, so we can't tell, we can't tell ourselves what the difference is. I'd like to just do it across the lines, so that's fair.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, it, sorry.
Yeah, touch.
So is that accepted, or you have to wait?
No, that portion is going to be.
They're shingle, and you're going to, yeah, we're going to approve the shingles today.
Okay.
We won't approve the guttering.
I'll try to find out, if you can give me a price for guttering this week, and then I will get ahold of Ulls, and I'll try to get ahold of the insurance company too. But if they're going to be replacing, even if the insurance won't pay it, it might be ideal to go ahead and replace while they're here.
While they're on, yeah. Okay, all right. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. So Innovative, we have the Sheriff's Department. Now we're on Health Department. I have Hill Construction for ten thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. That includes Malarky shingles, window screens. Two thousand, ten thousand two hundred and seventy dollars.
Did you have anything on there about pipe jacks or rain cap? Just, it's a small.
I have prefinished edge metals, synthetic filled underlying, pipe flashings, attic pans. Tear off existing shingles. Bridge cap.
Dale Hoyt, estimate total nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars even.
The Tamco's?
Um, yes.
Okay. I've innovated exteriors with the upgrade to impact resistant, ten thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, am I reading this correctly?
Yes. Ten thousand.
And if we want to go with the thirty-year Tamco's, we reduce it by one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Yes, sir.
Ten thousand six hundred and one?
Ten what? No.
Ten thousand six seventy-one nineteen.
Ten thousand two seventy.
Under.
Or, ten thousand five hundred and twenty-eight.
Less.
Less one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
But the, but your bid was with Malarky, not something else.
Mine is Malarky, yeah, same pattern.
So I moved to enter into the contract bid by Ulls.
I got, I got one more question.
Yeah.
Oh, what kind of warranty are you getting?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
What's the warranty on that bid?
I got a five-year warranty on mine.
Two-year workmanship warranty.
I think it's over two hundred grand bucks.
You're going to give a five-year?
Yeah, a five-year, a hundred and ten miles an hour, a bucket full of weed.
That motion better go for last second, since we're discussing now, and then I'll renew the rate date.
Your bidding on Malarky is just like he is.
Yeah, I'll match his price if you want me to. I don't care.
You can say ten thousand six.
Ten thousand six seventy-one nineteen. Smoke, can I cross that, let's go fire? Smoke, can I cross that?
Okay.
Push it up top.
Did you hear my question?
No.
Are we allowed to have an alteration of the bid when it's a stupid bid, just because there's representation here?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I do have one more question.
Yeah.
Insurance on the body of what?
Ten thousand six, I think.
Six seventy-one.
Seventy-one. They're all under the. So no matter what insurance you're going to pay out, whatever, basically, I or he or the other guy says, it's not going to be any less or any more.
Did you make, did you make a motion on the other bid?
I did, but it needs to die, because we've already discussed.
Okay, it died.
You don't make no motion.
I will. I was just looking up what their ratings were, Malarky versus the Tamco.
Well, he is up there.
Is it in there?
Yes.
It's in the ten, it's in the ten.
Oh, I'm sorry, this was the reduction if we went to Tamco from Malarky. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I misunderstood that. I thought you were bidding the total price there for Tamco, and we were looking at.
No, that's what, if you want to take the fifteen ninety-nine now, that's where you're at on this roof now. But I do believe your insurance company probably will give you some kind of rate differential if you put the impacts on properly, if they might as well take it.
We've been led to believe that in there.
Yeah.
So we're looking at ten, five twenty-eight, and what was the other one, ten, two seventy?
Ten, two seventy.
Okay. I moved to enter into the contract, the bid from Ulls.
Ulls?
Yes.
I'll second.
And move, and contract with Ulls for ten, two seventy, for the Health Department. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side. Thank you for your interest.
Will you leave? I need to get your names. Was there anything for the EMS station, replacing window screens?
Oh, yes, I do. I do have one. I have one from Hill Construction for window screens of five hundred and sixty dollars on EMS building. It's the only one we got.
And that's covered, correct?
Uh, yes, it's covered in the amount of one eighty-five ninety. And the, out of the landfill, three seventy-one eighty, but I guess we didn't put any bids for it.
I'd say.
None at all?
Apparently none.
Five hundred and sixty dollars.
I'd move there to. Hill Construction to replace the window screens, twelve window screens, EMS building for five hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second.
Move second, EMS building window screens for five sixty. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side. Thank you for your interest.
Will you leave? I need to get your names. Was there anything for the EMS station, replacing window screens?
Oh, yes, I do. I do have one. I have one from Hill Construction for window screens of five hundred and sixty dollars on EMS building. It's the only one we got.
And that's covered, correct?
Uh, yes, it's covered in the amount of one eighty-five ninety. And the, out of the landfill, three seventy-one eighty, but I guess we didn't put any bids for it.
I'd say.
None at all?
Apparently none.
Five hundred and sixty dollars.
I'd move there to. Hill Construction to replace the window screens, twelve window screens, EMS building for five hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second.
Move second, EMS building window screens for five sixty. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side. Thank you for your interest.
Will you leave? I need to get your names. Was there anything for the EMS station, replacing window screens?
Oh, yes, I do. I do have one. I have one from Hill Construction for window screens of five hundred and sixty dollars on EMS building. It's the only one we got.
And that's covered, correct?
Uh, yes, it's covered in the amount of one eighty-five ninety. And the, out of the landfill, three seventy-one eighty, but I guess we didn't put any bids for it.
I'd say.
None at all?
Apparently none.
Five hundred and sixty dollars.
I'd move there to. Hill Construction to replace the window screens, twelve window screens, EMS building for five hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second.
Move second, EMS building window screens for five sixty. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side. Thank you for your interest.
Will you leave? I need to get your names. Was there anything for the EMS station, replacing window screens?
Oh, yes, I do. I do have one. I have one from Hill Construction for window screens of five hundred and sixty dollars on EMS building. It's the only one we got.
And that's covered, correct?
Uh, yes, it's covered in the amount of one eighty-five ninety. And the, out of the landfill, three seventy-one eighty, but I guess we didn't put any bids for it.
I'd say.
None at all?
Apparently none.
Five hundred and sixty dollars.
I'd move there to. Hill Construction to replace the window screens, twelve window screens, EMS building for five hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second.
Move second, EMS building window screens for five sixty. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side. Thank you for your interest.
Will you leave? I need to get your names. Was there anything for the EMS station, replacing window screens? Is that something that you guys would be interested in getting some bids for?
I think we probably need to.
Okay.
Other things available to develop?
Okay. Well, I'm going to work on that.
Mr. Estro?
Yes?
We have used up half your time.
That's all right, that is. There you guys did it.
Oh, don't you tell me all you know.
That will change our status.
Hey, I got a.
Can you talk like the pizza delivery guy?
No. Sorry. Kind of a monotone kind of guy. Hey, we got a complaint into our office. I went out and looked at it, and it's a valid complaint. So, I was going to have you guys look at some of the photographs. What we have is a well that's not properly sealed, and we're going to have to get a top on it. Then there's some other issues, you notice the stock tank right next to the wellhead, and, yeah, it's not kosher, but overflow on the.
The groundwater running into the wells.
Yeah. So, now it goes as a clash injection well, which is, you know, has to be permitted, but you really wouldn't want to do that. And so, I have.
That is the number there.
And it has a submersible pump on it, so we.
Doug well.
And I'm sure it's a hand dug well, converted over. But we need to get a new lid on it, extend the casing up where the pump goes through. And then, we need to see about moving that stock tank. There needs to be fifty-foot of separation distance between that. And the good thing is, it does have a submersible, so we can push the water, so we should be able to push it far enough away from that well.
So we missed a good one?
I, I've prepared a letter. If you guys, I'll send that around to you. I guess we'll need your signature, and then I'll give it to Dylan to go to Lincoln County, just so you know. We do four counties, and all four of them are done differently on how they handle violations in Lincoln County. I investigate the violation, and if it's valid, then I come before you guys, and if you're in agreement with what I am, you sign that, and then we give it to the county council, which is county attorney in Lincoln County, and she'll send out the violation letter. And then, they coordinate with us when the well has been updated. I go out and reinfect it, and then I'll clear the violation, and I send a letter back to Jennifer O'Hare, which, and I can also come in and inform you when it's fixed.
I'm wondering why that comes from the county as the entity?
At the time, the sanitary code, I think the county commissioners didn't want to give up the whole authority of the sanitary code to the administrative agency. We are a contract county with you guys, and so you wanted, the county wanted a little bit of control over that. So, on violations, they felt like they wanted to look at this and make sure that they considered it just, because there's all kinds of violations, I suppose, if I went to a lot of people's farm, you could find little nitpicky things. I think there was one to confirm that it's actually a valid violation before they sent something out. So what this will do is go a letter to the homeowner, and now the homeowner's out of state, so there'll be some tenant that's managing that, and usually the tenant will give me a call and we'll work out. Usually we do an onsite visit and talk about the things that need to be addressed, and that works out pretty good.
Do I need a motion to sign this?
Uh, that's up to you guys.
Are you there?
I'd move to sign the violation notice.
I'll second.
Then move and say, sign the violation notice of well, private well, not being sealed properly. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to keep this stuff with there too, it can go out with the violation.
And you're going, I'm going to give this.
I'm going to give you a business card.
I'm going to give to, who am I going to give this to?
Give it to Don. Or I can.
I have a question.
Sure.
If that's a private piece of property, and then the landowner is out of town, they're out of state.
Out of state.
Out of town. So, when you get a call, do you, you don't contact the landowner first?
Uh, no. Because some of them are not valid complaints. Like if somebody comes in and complains, there's no sense of calling the homeowner until it's an actual.
So were those pictures sent to you as a?
No, I took those photographs. I got, I got a complaint, and in forty-eight hours from the complaint, we go out and investigate it.
You have to have some kind of answer as to whether it is or is not.
Yes, right, because many of the complaints we do are not valid, you know, they'll say, oh, this is terrible out there, and you go out there, and, you know, maybe it was terrible when they looked at it, but most of the times, people will see something, go into town and complain about, and by the time I get out there, that's why we try to do it in forty-eight hours, it's already cleaned up, and so it's not a valid complaint. So I don't really want to send a letter out.
Right. And then say, oh, never mind, you don't have to.
Right. So that's, that's our policy on that. I do have new business cards, let me get you some of those. And then, to follow up, I talked to you about going out in the field with me. We do have a failed septic system in Sylvan, up on the old highway, and when we go to fix that system, I want you to come out there, because we have, they were utilizing an old Cistern as a septic tank, see each bid, and that would be a good one for you to see, kind of a failed.
Do you have a date?
I do not. I'm at the mercy of.
You have a month?
Uh, I would think it'd be in the next month.
Honest?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm at the mercy of the contractor, and that was a cost year, so we had to wait till after the first of July, they qualified for cost year.
That'd be great.
All right.
Thank you.
And then I owe you guys some quarterly reports, I'll see if I can get them next. It won't be next week, but hopefully in two weeks, I'm out and give you an update on what's going on in the county. Any questions?
Thank you.
I'll get you some cards. John, thank you. Don, do you have the freezer bids, or is Greg coming?
Yes.
When I would ask for a five-minute recess. Or I wouldn't ask, I'll tell you, we're having a five-minute recess.
Fine with me. Thank you. And we no longer have landlines and a cell phone, so.
We don't have one. We don't have one?
Probably neither.
Probably want her in here, yeah.
Probably want her in here since we don't have some bids.
Yep. All right, but passing's out to you guys.
Yeah.
Makes you hit the cap order.
Will.
Get you that. One more little access there. There you go, man.
Now, if Dawn needs one, I got set for her as well.
We could get her one.
Okay.
Is she still there or is she...
She's coming back.
Good? All right.
Okay, Greg?
All right. Okay, I have passed you guys out some, uh, some estimates bids for, uh, new freezer. Uh, the current freezer we have has gone down, it's been down about a week now. Uh, working on this freezer, first off, let me state that the freezer that we have is about twenty years old. It's nineteen years old. Be exact. Uh, got called in last Monday, freezer down. Uh, went through it, uh, found numerous refrigeration leaks, so on and so forth. Further investigation on this thing. Could not get the head pressure to come down, it would trip the high limit switch. Tried several times, even to the point of rebuilding the expansion valve, uh, versus a new valve body. Changed it all out with the guts of the existing valve. And anyway, still came into the same problem. Contacted the company that bought the call out, they no longer exist. That's what we had, the call freezer. Um, talked to them, uh, found out that you have to have this exact expansion valve to fit the application. Okay, that's fine, it's three hundred and fifty bucks, sounds good. Problem is, they don't manufacture these old valves very often. So, we're, we're looking at four weeks to wait for this expansion valve. The other thing is, with that, it could be a blockage in the expansion, or the, uh, evaporator coil. You're looking at three thousand dollars there. So, now, we're looking at, what, three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars per unit, exclusion, refrigerant, and labor, which will probably put us at or over four thousand dollars for a nineteen-year-old unit. So, therefore, I brought you guys in those, uh, those estimates. Like I said, this county equipment, your input is needed. I know I have the budget for this, but, uh, I would appreciate your input on it, uh, what you guys think on that purchase. You will notice on the bids there, Street did put, uh, removal and, uh, I believe installation, uh, on their bid. Uh, Sunflower is gonna be relatively the same, except for the mileage, of course, they're out of town, installing it. Um, but they're, you did put it down, but they're gonna be relatively the same cost, I, I imagine.
Probably the same type?
Yes, seventy-two cubic foot. Uh, both of these units will have, uh, just like that McCall originally was, with the, uh, compressor, uh, coils mounted on top of them. Currently, what we had in the past on that McCall system, actually, when I worked for Street Plumbing back in the day, uh, we had to take that compressor, move it outside due to the heat in the storage room. I'm gonna hack a lot of heat out and causing things to go bad due to the heat in that room. Not the unit itself, the food that they store there, I guess. So, we'll probably, no matter which way we go, we're gonna have to go in there and, uh, take that compressor, mount it outdoors, and we can give it a run and see how we do. I'm betting we're gonna have to mount, mount it outside. I looked into the possibilities as well, when I was doing research on this, talking to companies, about, uh, "Hey, can you guys just give me the evaporator cool box and new compressor system, and I could change that out on the existing cabinet?" Uh, being there's nothing wrong with a freezer cabinet itself, but evidently, you know, these manufacturers do that. Could've saved us a few thousand dollars if we could've gone that route.
Sunflower didn't include anything for removal and installation?
Right, that's what I was just saying. Uh, it's gonna be relatively the same, I guess, except for mileage and stuff like that. It's gonna probably be a little higher with Sunflower.
See, Street also includes previous labor diagnosing on the unit, they been out there...
Yes, I have them out there, uh, following up my stuff, so I think it'll find anything for them.
So, this, so we won't get a labor charge for that, if we go with Street? That's what I'm understanding.
Right, uh, well, there could be, for this, his time there, he may have a little bill there for him coming out and looking at it.
It says includes all previous labor diagnosing on the whole unit.
Oh, okay, I didn't recall. All right, well, that takes care of it then. That's a pretty good deal.
And the makes, the, and are the makes the same, or are they different?
There are gonna be two different makes of, uh, equipment. The one with Street's, I know that they can have that unit here, I think he said, within three days, three business days, and be coming out of Kansas City. Sunflower, I don't know if he said anything on his deal.
I haven't seen anything.
Um, I'm, I know he doesn't have it on the showroom floor, so I would hope it'd be competitive with, uh, the three-day deal.
Sunflower comes to work on our eventually, that charge mileage, I think.
Right.
Well, it's a three-year parts warranty with Street, and it's only a one-year parts warranty with Sunflower. Both for five-year on a compressor.
Yeah, that's pretty common on compressors.
Yo!
I'm behind, uh, what's the deal with John Grayson, we gotta keep the freezers and refrigerators all up?
We own them, we own them.
They're county owned.
We, we own them. We already own them.
Oh.
Yeah.
Part of the equipment, Don.
We own most of the equipment up there.
The major, the major equipment. It was set up like that originally, so that when we switched, uh, leases, the main equipment stayed with the facility.
But when's all that, when's that transaction supposed to...
What transaction?
With Grayson and all that.
He has, he has, he leased it, he leased the...
He's already leased the facility.
He has a three-year lease on the facility.
Okay.
The new stuff you're talking about, that, I don't know, that's, that's him. It's a private, that, that's not a...
It's not a guarantee.
County.
It's a three-year, you gotta keep the...
John Grayson bought the business from Kristen Robinson, and he got the same deal with the county that was there.
You're still...
But the lease does say that we are responsible for the equipment to maintain. And I'm not sure, I mean, is this the exact same freezer that's in there?
Seventy-two cubic inch, yeah. Different brand names, but same freezer, same three-compactor freezer. Nothing bigger, nothing smaller, nothing exactly the same.
It's the fish of the size.
I honestly don't know where we are off the top of my head with the budget for the year. Do you have that number?
I know, that's me, Don.
Don, is there a way that you can pull that up, please? Have we received invoices for the parts that you tried when you were attempting to fix the...
No, you won't, because it's all purchaser Street. I mean, evidently, he's not charging you for that.
Well, no, it says labor. I'm wondering about the, didn't you say you attempted to fix it?
Yeah, we tried to rebuild an expansion valve.
The valve, do you know what the cost of that was?
I don't.
Rebuild the valve?
Yeah, we tried to rebuild the valve. Uh, basically, we took a, a valve body and put all the guts and everything, the existing valve, tried to get things to balance out, no luck.
So, we have two bids, Street Plumbing and Heating. Um, a three-door master built Fusion Series. Total of the cost of the freezer, plus removal of old and install new unit totaling seven thousand one hundred and eighty-five. And from Sunflower, Restaurant Supply and Soliton, the freezer and cord and plug, and the warranty, six thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. But it looks like there's a difference in warranties. One-year parts on Sunflower, three-year parts on Street. And this, oh, I'm sorry, this one is a Charlesin, if, Charles, Charleston? If I'm saying that correctly.
Icar. Charleston.
Including installation.
And does it come, yeah, it doesn't have an installation?
Removal.
Or removal?
Fourteen thousand, seventy-nine thousand.
Seventy-nine thousand.
I'd move to like speed purchase a freezer from Street Plumbing.
Have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Labor say aye? Aye, opposed? Uh, she needs Carrie.
Okay, thank you.
Get it in there.
Um, couple of things while I'm here.
Yep.
John Grayson's one of these, we've got, uh, some things stored in one of the assisted living rooms. Uh, we happen to have, Park Beach donated, uh, some, uh, hair dryers, the seat tile hair dryers. I happen to have three of those, I think one of them might be hers, and I think you guys have two, uh, stored in one of the assisted living rooms. Uh, my question is, what would you like me to do with those? You always wanna sell them, you want me to take them somewhere? Uh, because I need to have these rooms available to move in.
How old are they?
Pretty damn old, I'd say, sixty, seventies, probably. I have, uh, I've gone through, two years ago, and did a lot of maintenance on them, on a lot of new parts and stuff. So, I mean, they're functioning very well. Um, they just look nice, so, uh...
They're not being used?
They're not being used right now, they're in storage.
But you do have new ones.
Well, they're not new, they were used, and she brought in, in better condition than these were.
I don't, I think we have them.
Yeah, I did...
We don't have a place to store them.
Yeah, that's kinda where I'm at, so...
Yeah, we sell them.
Can you put them on, can you put them on a Nextech or something and move them? And make something off of them?
No, I'd put them on Nextechs if it's, so...
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
Need one again? The hair dryer.
Yeah, I'll pay you next week.
You get all the rain out there, you may need one.
Yeah, I'd advertise and see if anybody wants them.
Okay, I just wanted you guys permission to deal with it, if you want me to try to have one of the girls put on Nextech, or, you know, the county does something, I have no idea.
I don't think we do any, Don, do we, regularly?
Do you guys do anything with that Purple Wave, would that be something?
I don't know.
I don't know whether Purple Wave, do something like that.
They've gotten John's pick number through the year.
Yeah, try to street bay or something like that. Nextech, all of them.
Yeah, try to move, try to get something out of it. You never know, there might be some starting musician that is interested in that. Okay, I'll get that. Uh, kinda give you a, a up-to-date stuff on what's been happening as far as our project stuff. Uh, Eric Johnson, the last two weeks, uh, all this is kinda taking place, has come out, uh, and visited the facility, uh, really looking over the floor stuff a little more closely, more measurements, uh, examining possible ideas for how he's going to make these repairs. Uh, at the same time, uh, he was there, he had a crew of surveyors out there, uh, checking out where the utility locations are at, mapping that, property lines, so on and so forth. Um, also, uh, Eric Verman, last week, came out, uh, with Orzan and Scalora Engineering. He was checking out the electrical service information, all that stuff. Looks like that's going pretty well. We've kinda, visiting with him, have kinda decided to set three transfer switches, one in each, uh, addition of the nursing facilities. Garrett also looked at, uh, rerouting the grease trap, we talked about, uh, across parking lots, mine is there. You know, also looked at the, uh, chiller, uh, condenser situation we have. Uh, visited with him, they're thinking about setting one orchard unit, sounded good. After Garrett's visit, uh, I was kinda thinking about some things. Are we stuck on, on the chiller? Going that route with the boiler-chiller system still, or is that, do we have any input?
On what now?
Well, I guess, they're just talking about the possibility of, you know, updating that chiller system we have, air conditioning of that older leak. Uh, my, my question is, are we, are we stuck with that? Because when Garrett first came out, when they were doing that initial report, that book you guys got, uh, I visited with Garrett a little bit about, uh, a little bit different system of the commercial mini-split system. I don't know. The, the reason I'm asking this is, I guess, is because of the shoulder seasons we have there in the nursing home. When you have, you know, winter into, into spring, and so on and so forth, those shoulder system seasons, I have a lot of complaints as far as comfort. Probably all been in there at one time or another and felt the same things. That's why, I guess, I, I asked him at that time about, uh, the mini-split systems. You would have a thermostat in each room, everything would be climate controlled, your offices, your rooms, so on and so forth. There was a possibility why they aren't looking further into that.
What's, what's included in that original package?
Costs.
Costs?
Yeah, okay, is it, is it a cost issue?
I, I, visiting with Garrett, it sounded like you were pretty comparative with the, the chiller system. So, I, I didn't know if we were just stuck, or if there was any openness to saying, "Hey, can you guys look into this and have something competitive with this, this one option?"
Personally, I have no problem with you listening to about it, if you think something needs to be changed. That is a complaint in all rest homes, is once your air conditioning, your air conditioner, when you eat, you eat, residents are cold.
Your residents are always cold.
People in the ops are hot, you know? It's a, it's a real problem. And, you know, I...
You know, with our west hall and our assisted living, I can control that pretty easily. But that boiler system, you know, you can't just shut a boiler system down and switch right over.
I'd be interested in costing that.
What's in the proposal? What, what is included in the proposal, just one or the other?
At this time, I think they're just looking at the chiller system.
Right now, they're just looking at the chiller.
Uh, you know, and that was another thing, while I'm thinking about, on the chiller system, he did ask me the question. He says, "Well, you know, if we go through this system, and, uh, you know, they're running new water lines and all that for that chiller system, would you ask to insulate the potable water lines?" He says, "Well, it makes sense, you know, if we're in there insulating in the crawl space and doing all this, we might as well insulate your water lines." So, I said, "Well, that sounds good." So, I looked up the cost of this in that report, and you're looking at about twenty thousand dollars insulation on the water lines. Anyway, that's another thing to discuss another time with you guys, whatever you want. Uh, back to that, uh, variable refrigerant flow system. You know, a lot of those lines too can't be run right smack through the crawl space, just like the other water lines we have. They come up to registers just like exactly the hot water ones have. Um, another benefits is, take your dining room, uh, you can go in there and set a CO detector when you have a large group of people in there, to monitor that. You can let in fresh air, once that CO alarm activates. There's lots of benefits over, over not just thermal comfort in each room, but, uh, yeah. I didn't know if I had permission to, to visit with Garrett and say, "Hey, can you do this, uh, you know, give us an idea what that would, would be?" So...
I have no problem to do that.
You're saying only for the original portion of the building? You're saying only for the original portion of the building?
Yes, yes, just that original older part of the building, yeah. The, the other reason I, I'm thinking this way is, you know, here we are with this greenhouse stuff. What if you guys do wanna make that county offices or whatever you wanna do? You know, are you all gonna wanna deal with that shoulder season crap too? Or would you rather be able to operate your room to your comfort? You might even go to shut a room off if it's empty, you know, if you're gonna store boxes in it, whatever. Just saying, it kinda makes sense if you're gonna be spending money on anything.
I think it's, we need, we need a cost comparison before we move it out.
Yeah, I think it'd be a smart idea. Yeah, I'll, I'll let them know that, so...
I know.
Investigate that.
That's an issue down there in that line.
Well, that's basically, I think, all I had, guys. I will get this freezer thing going.
I would be interested in his opinion too, whether he thinks that's the direction we should go.
Visiting with him, initially, he thought that would be a great system. That's why when he started talking about this chiller thing, I was like, well, what have you got on this mini-split idea? We're just pretty much focusing on this, so I thought, well, maybe there was something I could know.
I'm wondering, you said Eric had his crew out so they could map out some of the utility lines in it?
Correct.
Okay.
They're trying to figure a location of setting that generator.
But they, but that wasn't done previously? He told us that he had all the blueprints.
We, we, yeah, he had all the old blueprints. Basically, they had the utility guys go out and mark flags on the lines and make sure that their drawings were accurate to meet...
Making sure the, the original blueprints that he obtained?
Right.
Not that he, not that he created.
Property lines, all that stuff. Because like property lines, that would've been on that original print.
But that's an original print, I'm saying, you're, you're saying he's now in the process of creating his own blueprints?
Right.
That's interesting, 'cause we already paid him for that. That's what he said, that's what he said, that he already had the drawing?
Yeah, he's got the drawings, they're just verifying locations and utilities, phone lines, all that stuff.
I understand what you're saying.
As well as your topographical stuff, which, you know, especially with your green energy or whatever. On that generator thing. Visiting with Garrett on that as well, I guess they're focusing on a diesel at this time. Last time I visited with him, we were gonna have some meetings after I visited with him, the diesel unit. Okay, that's great, there's a lot of maintenance that goes along with a diesel generator. Your fuel, for instance, you're gonna winterize your fuel, you're gonna, you know, if you don't change that fuel out, you're gonna have problems with that diesel engine running treated fuel in the summertime. I was personally hoping they'd go propane, natural gas, I don't think we want that at all. First time we have a tornado, they shut all the gas off, and I know that. So, I was really hoping that they could come up with a proper kilowatt generator for that application in propane. He was looking into that. Hopefully that'll work out, if not, I guess, if you can't, is there a possibility of looking into three small ones? That run propane? I don't know, that's up to those guys.
I don't want them to read.
That's a lot of, a lot of extra work for me. Lot of extra records and a lot of extra maintenance, but...
Well, you do wanna keep it long, right?
Some days I wander, Alexis. Yeah, I've got plenty of job. So, anyway, I will, I will visit with those guys about that, keep you guys on your schedule and get out of here.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, Norman?
You're gonna make the phone call in front of Garrett?
I don't have the figures in front of me.
Garrett, you're gonna make the phone call in front of Garrett?
I'll get that going.
I didn't out for bid, why isn't the bid more specific? Because what I'm hearing here, there's a vague switch tactic going on. Last two contracts we've ordered from the contractor for going to rookie. Was there a bid specific on this refrigeration unit? Or you just sent it out for bid and check what comes? Why don't you have a specification, minimum bid? Then those specifications are what's a product that you want.
May I answer him?
You're, you're confusing.
I have two answers for you. Number one, we didn't solicit bids on the freezers, that was through Lincoln Park Manor. But on the roofs, they got a copy of what the insurance company proposed to us as far as what they would pay. So, they knew. I think the one company didn't bother bidding on screens because of the, that was a smaller job. They only bid on the larger jobs that included the roofing with the screens. But there, they did get a full list of what was going to be paid for and the allotted amount, right? But, excuse me, the, the allotted amount was included. So, they got what we got as far as what the insurance company...
Well, I didn't see that, we didn't see it.
He had it.
Don was telling, as we opened, as we opened the bids, Don told us what the allotment was from the insurance company and then we read off the bid amounts, but...
He indicated he didn't wanna even look at the screens of the landfill, so I don't think he...
Thank you.
So, this is your quarterly report, Andrew?
Yes, the motor vehicle.
And motor vehicle?
And I did check on the wind farm CDs. The Bank of Tuskegee is semi-annually and Citizens is quarter.
So, we haven't purchased any more CDs?
We purchased the children's and a Pitterd on Friday. Four on there, yeah, a hundred and fifty and a hundred thousand.
What percentage?
One four nine.
One four nine?
Two years.
Two years, so...
And I would like to do a little bit more wind farm money, but I just feel like I need to wait and see what's going on.
The motor vehicle fund about the same since it's been running pretty close.
Did you wanna read those off?
Motor vehicle fund has sixteen thousand five hundred and three dollars and thirty-nine cents. Total idle funds for this quarter are seven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars, three cents. That's the interest on idle funds. Julia Pitterd's total for the quarter is six hundred and fifty-three dollars, nine cents. Children endowment is three hundred and twenty-two dollars and twelve cents. Rural fire is three hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-one cents. Reappraisal consultant is forty-five cents. Water recovery team is forty-four cents. Wind power is eight thousand eighty-four dollars and ninety-four cents.
The water recovery team even active?
And Steve McCrenals questioned me as why we can't get rid of it and dissolve it into the first row fire.
I think it was actually tied with the rescue.
Was it rescue?
Wasn't it tied with rescue, Don?
I would say yes, I don't know.
We, we had money from, it was always wrestling for the diving, but we don't, no one dives in our county anymore. And we don't receive that money anymore.
So, are we not drawing out of that fund at all either?
I think they had a contract with the late three years. But the Red Star can acquire so much training that the training costs were far exceeding the amount of money that they were providing. I think they stopped it.
Anybody else have any questions for Lynn? Thank you, Lynn. Send Mr. Jackson in if he can find you.
Oh, there he is.
First page is the same we gave you two weeks ago. Second page I just highlighted with... I came up with on the amount of tires, process tires. Forty-pound minimum, three dollars and fifty cents. That comes to one seventy-five a ton. Resource management, who we dealt with on old tires, was one twenty-five a ton and they went up to one fifty a ton. And this is a little less than fifty percent added, so...
A little less than fifteen?
Just a little bit, yeah. Anyway, I just wondered if it's worded good.
Looks like what we talked about. We changed the policy for the landfill to accept processed tires, so we are accepting tires that are intact, but someone had come in with processed tires and we basically made a minimum weight so that we could charge by the weight and it comes out to a hundred and seventy-five dollars per ton. And there's a specific way that you have to process, you have to cut out the sidewalls and then...
Side walls off and then, bigger, bigger tires, you have to cut them in twos.
Cut the tread so that it's not...
If you wanna go to the truck.
Seems like extra work unless you were trying to store some somehow.
Got a lot of shingles in CD hood?
Yes.
Keep them pushed up, you got those right there.
Hope to get a lot more too, I think.
Yeah. Lot of rules.